All right. Good evening, everyone. The Tuscaloosa City Council has now come to order. If you would, please stand if you're not already for our pledge and then remain standing for our, I'm sorry, I'm out. Now I'm out of order. We're gonna have a prayer person attend the pledge of allegiance. So if you'd bow your heads for prayer. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen.
Amen.
Now we will say our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated and I apologize. It's been a day where the council has been back to back to back to back. So I'm a little bit of a scrambled egg at the moment. Approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Minutes stand approved. Proclamation statements by mayor and council. Any council announcements tonight? Okay, any department announcements? I know of none. Agenda item comments by citizens? We have none. Unfinished business clerk.
This will amend various sections of chapter seven of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
Move it up.
Second.
It's been moved in second, uh, voting Mr. Phel.
Yes.
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 Call for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second for unanimous consent, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Code is amended. Consent agenda, clerk.
This approves items A through E on the consent.
Move it up.
Second. Been moved in second, voting Mr. Phel.
Yes.
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 Consent agenda is, is approved. Public hearings, clerk.
This will approve the special retail alcohol license of more than thirty days for the venue in Northport.
Move it up.
Second.
It's been moved in second, uh, if the, if, Mr. Mills, if you would.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is ABC Alcohol Application two-two, dash zero-five-two for a special retail alcohol license of more than thirty days. Located at sixty fifty-two Watermelon Road. This is a map, uh, area map of the location. Uh, my second is another satellite map of the proposed location. Um, my third picture shows the ground breaking where the location is gonna be built at. Um, all necessary reports have been filed with the City Clerk Office, followed by, um, sorry, Officer Champion will give his report. Uh, followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Officer Champion?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, crime report for sixty fifty-two Watermelon Road from July the twenty-sixth, July twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two. We have no incidents reported for that area. No crimes reported at all for that address.
Any questions for Officer Champion?
I have a question for Antonio. Why, why is this, um, this is the place out, uh, kind of across from Sokol that we've looked at and seen.
Yes, sir.
Why is special retail alcohol license the right choice as opposed to the normal beer and wine on and off premise?
Okay, so this, this is, basically, this is how the ABC licenses it, but with them being responsible, then there's gonna be several different, um, establishments at this location. They will be responsible for providing alcohol for those locations, different businesses. So that's how, that's why they license special retail.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I'm sorry. This is, um, this has been a special retail more than thirty days. My understanding is gonna be several locations, establishments at this location. So they'll be responsible vendor for all the other alcohol establishments at their location.
Okay. All right. And so this is the right choice for that?
I think they're gonna have most of their vendors, like food trucks and, I mean, Brian.
Like around Gunna Plaza.
Yeah, Brian.
All right, I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Mills or Officer Champion? If the applicant is here, would come forward, please give your name and address.
Brian Finneson.
And if you would just give an address for the record.
Fifteen hundred High Forest Drive, Tuscaloosa.
Any questions for Mr. Finneson?
When you open up?
Six to eight weeks.
Looks like construction's coming along.
It's coming along nicely. Had a few delays as we've gone through, like everybody in the world has had, but, uh, it is coming along nicely. And we've had a lot of community support, which we're very thankful for.
We do. We'll be out there a lot this fall with flag football, so.
We're looking forward to it.
Come by and visit.
Thank you.
Good luck. I'm happy to issue alcohol license not in District Four.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
We're good. Thanks, Mayor.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 ABC license is approved. Good luck. Clerk?
This will approve the special retail alcohol license of more than thirty days for Bryant-Denny Stadium.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Mills?
Okay, Mayor and Council. This is ABC Alcohol Application twenty-two dash zero-five-three for special retail alcohol more than thirty days. Uh, located nine twenty Paul Bryant Bryant Drive, gate number five. It's the Levy, uh, University of Alabama Bryant-Denny Stadium. The first picture shows the area picture where it's gonna be, uh, proposed applicant at. This is another area view of it. Um, all the necessary reports have been filed with the City Clerk Office. Followed, uh, Officer Champion will give his report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Officer Champion? Good evening.
So for nine twenty Paul Bryant Drive from July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, we have no incidents listed. This will be our heat map for within a quarter mile. For it to be in Bryant-Denny Stadium at this point in time, there was no, nothing listed.
Any questions for Officer Champion?
Can I see the quarter mile heat map one more time, please? All right, thank you.
So is there just no crime on the University of Alabama campus?
Or on University Boulevard. It's, all right, enough of that. Antonio, same question. Why is special retail license the right, um, tool for this, this request?
Again, it's, it's, it's allow them to sell at different levels. So Bryant-Denny Stadium sellers just on one floor, they can, uh, sell at several different gates and several different areas.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our team members? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Robert Tesh, um, the address here is nine twenty Paul Bryant Drive. You want my personal address?
That'll work.
All right, there you go. And it's at Paul Bryant Drive at gate five.
Um, I have a question. How, um, that's a big stadium, of course. How will that, how is that going to, logistically? You kind of, I'm trying to visualize how many areas there will be that, that alcohol will be available.
Okay, yeah, we're working through that currently still, uh, because this has kind of been a little bit last minute. But, uh, we do have most of our stands, with the exception of the stands in the student section. And then there will be a couple of other stands that don't have, uh, any kind of a selection. And then also around the stadium where we can, uh, put, uh, portables. We will have some, uh, beer portables around, uh, the concourses on the first floor, second floor, and, uh, the eighth floor.
And what type of alcohol will be offered?
It'll be beer, beer and wine exclusively. It, it, we will not have any, uh, spirits.
Okay.
Yes.
Will there, and I think we asked this before, and by the way, thank you on your previous appearance, you got some information back to us very quickly. But will there be the guys or gals walking around with the trays selling beer?
Not, not in the bowl.
Not in the what?
Not in the bowl, where the people sit. The only people that would, yeah, the only people that would, uh, we will have some hawkers, or we plan to. But they will only be kind, uh, kind of pick, uh, cherry picking the lines, uh, in the concourse. So there won't be, uh, like exposure, like somebody walking around like you do with a, you know, the other venues with cokes and stuff. Uh, we'll still have water and lemonade, uh, in the bowl, but the people that will be walk, there will be a few people walking around. But it's just to kind of get the last people in line. I, I know you guys have probably been to a game or two. The lines are a little excessive sometimes. So we're trying to do some things to, to help that, uh, process.
Okay. No hawk, no beer hawkers in the bowl?
No, no beer hawkers in the bowl.
Just to help move some lines along.
Yes, just to help move lines along. Yes, sir.
Explain a little bit about how this is gonna be managed and especially underage drinking, but, but how is, what's the process that you put in?
So we have quite a few different things that we're employing to, uh, help manage this. Uh, I'll just start out with number one. Uh, every single person that is gonna be selling will be checking in as Levy Food Service. We've already started getting, uh, indemnification forms for all the nonprofit groups, uh, for all the subcontractors. Everybody's required to take a two-hour, uh, serve-safe alcohol class, um, everyone, uh, down to, uh, subcontractor. Even if they're not necessarily, even if the person's not selling alcohol or just working with food in the stand, they still have to take the class. Um, we're going to identify, we're still kind of working through this a little bit, but we're gonna identify everybody who is twenty-one at check-in with either a wristband. Uh, we also have some pins coming that identify them as twenty-one. Um, and then as far as the underage, we are carding every cell. Um, I don't know if that's what you're looking for in particular, but every cell, uh, should be carded. We're, we're, that's how we're training our staff. So, um, even if you come up three times to the same person or, you know, uh, it'd be hard to tell with you guys, y'all look so young. So you, you definitely getting carded. But no, we, we plan on carding. If you look, if you look eighty, we're gonna card you. If you look, you know, whatever, we're gonna card you. Every cell is, uh, showing ID.
Like Target.
I guess. I don't, I don't purchase.
Your Target cards everybody. I don't care if you're a hundred.
Yeah, so we're, I know it'll be a little bit of a pain for the people that want it, but, um, we're doing some other things in the stand, uh, too, to kind of maybe speed things up. Because we know that that's gonna be a little detractor of time, but, um, we gotta do it. It's, it's the only way to proceed.
One of the things, if I remember, we talked about this earlier, you mentioned you guys manage at College Station at A and M.
Yes.
I'm remembering in Arkansas in Fayetteville, right?
Yes.
Remember that?
Yes.
So what have been the major issues that you've had? And, and I think A and M Stadium is a little larger than ours, if I, if my memory serves me. I know Arkansas isn't. But, but what are some of the major problems that you've had? And then how have you guys adjusted to manage this? And what, what would you, is there anything different about Alabama?
So I did a little bit of homework, because I thought you might ask that based on last time. Um, really, the, the homework that I've done, that, uh, we, I don't, Levy has their own, what they call E fifteen. They kind of, it's an analytical group. And from what I can tell, having alcohol, being able to sell it actually helps a little bit with the number of incidences. Because I think people aren't forced to bring in the little mini bottles, um, and, uh, things that they normally do. So I, I think it kind of helps with some of the incidences, but as far as the biggest struggle, um, there's not really been, from a legally, from a legal standpoint, any real issue, uh, that I could find that, you know, would, would hold us back. The biggest thing is, uh, you know, they card everybody as well. So it's, that's Levy policy. So, um, it kind of just slows the lines down.
So, so you did not see a major increase in issues with patrons because you were selling beer?
No, i- i- if anything, the data suggested that it was, either was flat or went the other way. Um, just because people weren't getting all tanked up before the game. And I think that one good thing is now people, sorry, sorry, I'm country. But, uh, people, yeah, I think at the, at this point, they can kind of come in two hour, two and a half hours before the game. They're not inclined to sit and, and maybe drink and then come in at the last minute. So, um, that, there's opportunity to buy food there, uh, that, that helps that situation. So, uh, if anything, the data showed that there was very, that, that was very flat as far as any kind of issues that had happened before.
Um, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you, you just mentioned the two and a half hour window that persons are able to come in by, before the game. So what about once the game is ending? With, is there a certain time of cutout?
Yes, uh, that is actually mandated by the SEC.
Okay.
And it's at the, uh, end of the third quarter.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this applica, excuse me, application? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
David Parr, twenty-three ten Northridge Road, Tuscaloosa. I'm not used to being in this kind of situation and talking like this, but, um, I would just vote against this. Uh, you're in a venue that is not a certain kind of music or, uh, something that you don't take your kids to. This is sometimes a family event. Uh, you have people who are gonna be drinking right next to you, right around you. There's already enough alcohol on the campus as it is with tailgaters and students. Um, I would just think that the decrease in incidents alone would be because it's not an incident anymore to have a flask or a bottle on you when you enter the stadium. That doesn't mean that, you know, just because you don't have those people and you count those out, I would wonder how close you are to how many incidents you have. Uh, you're also dealing with freshmen and sophomores who are not even eligible to drink anymore. Yet, they're not old enough. Uh, and having been here at this university before as a student, I can guarantee you that a senior is very likely to go and buy a beer and pass it right down to their freshman buddy. Um, personally, I have been buying tickets on and off for thirty, forty years. And, um, this is the first year I did not buy tickets specifically because of this. And if it comes up again for gymnastics or basketball, I'm just as likely not to buy tickets and not be there, spending the money that they would like me to spend. Just from a personal aspect, I don't have anything against drinking. But if I'm gonna go somewhere and pay eighty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars per ticket to be somewhere, I would like to be somewhere where I feel comfortable. If I don't feel comfortable, I'm not coming. I can't, you can't say the university's not making enough money, uh, that they need this. Um, and just because somebody wants it, doesn't mean you need to see, say yes. You're, you're here to do what's most responsible for your constituents, not everything they ask for. That would be all I'd have to say.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, coming in.
Thanks, David. Anyone else wish to address their city council? Seeing none, any comments or questions for the council?
I, I do have a comment, uh, that I, I think is important to make. Um, I am going to vote for this. And the reason that I am is that, uh, you know, we did work a compromise, I think a very good one, with the University of Alabama that will greatly help our policemen and firemen. Um, and that, uh, would, you know, be one sum yearly for five years. Two hundred and fifty thousand, I do believe, is the, two hundred and fifty thousand from the university. And, um, that will be designated for the Police and Fire Pension Fund, which, um, honestly, if it weren't for that, I would probably be voting no. Uh, but I, I think this is something that will greatly benefit our police and fire, who have worked all these years, um, with, you know, no overtime help from the university. And it's all been on the city. And so I believe this is, um, a valid reason, at least for me, for supporting it.
Any other council comments or questions?
I think this is a very difficult issue to, I, I have gotten a lot of phone calls on both ways about this. I personally have. I don't know where other people stand on this, but it's, this is something that I echo Mr. Tyner's comments, that, that if I did not feel comfortable that this was going to be managed in the right way, I don't think I could vote for this either. But the main reason is because of the fire and police. I mean, I think it's a, this is a very difficult issue for everybody. So.
Um, if I may.
Taking it seriously.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
This is tough. Nobody, nobody in this room supports the police more than I do. But I'm gonna have to vote no, just because I think for me, it's the right vote. But I, it's a hard, hard decision. It really is.
Anyone else wish to make any comments? Okay, uh, voting Mr. Phel.
No.
Yes.
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 Measure passes. Good luck. Clerk?
This orders demolition of the structure at twenty-eight ten Elm Street.
Move it up.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Williams?
Mayor, Council, this is for the condemnation of twenty-eight ten Elm Street. It was condemned June ninth, twenty twenty-two. This property has thirty-four housing code violations. The property is in the area of the West End Revitalization Program. Excuse me. Authorized by Mayor Maddox. The owner has been contacted and advised at this hearing. The owner is aware that if this property is condemned and demolished by the City of Tuscaloosa, the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. The owner does not intend to dispute or appeal the decision of the city council. The owner may be here tonight. I'm not sure.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? Thank you, sir. Is the owner here tonight of this property? Are you, Ms. Young, you the owner?
No. This is my grandmother.
Are you, oh, so you're representing?
This is my grandmother, so I'm her representative.
If you would, please give your name and address.
Lisa Young, six one seven zero Lob Lolly Lane, uh, three five four zero.
Lisa, would you please speak in the microphone for people at home?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Do you want me to repeat my address?
If you would.
Six one seven zero Lob Lolly Lane.
That's better.
Uh, three five four zero five.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this is my grandmother's house. It caught fire, um, twenty sixteen, latter part of twenty sixteen. Um, my grandmother, right now, is ninety-eight, lives with me. Um, unfortunately, when it caught fire, the insurance company had canceled her policy. Um, so she did not have insurance. Um, we pay the property taxes, but there is, she will never live in that house again. So, um, I voluntarily signed the, um, condemnation to have the city to just go ahead and tear it down.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Young?
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the demolition of twenty-eight ten Elm Street? Seeing none, voting, uh, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Demolition's ordered. Clerk?
This orders demolition of the structure at forty-one oh seven Eleventh Street.
Move it up.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Williams?
This is for the condemnation of forty-one oh seven Eleventh Street, condemned June ninth, twenty twenty-two. This property is also in the area of the West End Revitalization Program authorized by Mayor Maddox. This property has forty-three housing code violations. Property caught fire on December fourth, twenty twenty. The owner applied for a repair permit on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. No inspections were documented. The property caught fire again on Ja- January twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. The permit has expired and no repairs have been made. The owner has been notified, but we have not personally spoken to the owner. Notifications do advise the owner that if the property is condemned and demolished by the City of Tuscaloosa, the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. We have spoken with a relative of the owner and may, they may or may not be here to represent the property.
Any questions, Mr. Williams? Is there the owner or representative from forty-one oh seven Eleventh Street here tonight? As the record show, we do not have the owner or a representative from forty-one oh seven Eleventh Street. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none. Any more questions from the council? Voting, Mr. Phel.
Yes.
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 Demolition's ordered. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Resolution ordinances not of adjournal nature or permanent operation. Clerk?
This will approve the less than seven-day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at Date Party in Tuscaloosa.
Off of the adoption?
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Mills?
All right, Mayor and Council, the next ten alcohol applications are, uh, conducted by the same applicant. So all the same reports will apply for. The first two are located at, uh, twenty-three oh one Joe Mallishtown Parkway. The next eight are located on university, uh, property. Uh, this one right here again is alcohol application twenty-two dash zero-five-four for Date Park, uh, again, is located at twenty-three oh one Joe Mallishtown Parkway. Um, all necessary reports have been filed with the City Clerk Office. Officer Champion will give his report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Officer Champion? And again, as Mr. Mills did, anything related or any issues related by PD may have with any of the nine applications? If you'd go ahead and highlight those now, if you have any.
There's none for the following nine, sir. Same, given where they're at, same, generally from last year as all the events. We didn't have any issues with anything you had done last year.
Any questions for Officer Champion or Mr. Mills? Okay. Otherwise, we'll begin a vote then. Voting.
Whoa.
We gotta hear from applicant. The applicant, right? When do we hear from the applicant? Oh, that's correct. I'm sorry.
Long day, Mayor.
I'm with you, Mayor.
Walt, this is where all the fun is.
The applicant would, I saw there wasn't a public hearing, so I, uh, I put the accelerator down. If the applicant would come forward, thank you very much. Applicant would come forward, please give your name and address.
It's, uh, Brandon Hanks from Downtown Entertainment, five oh four Twenty-first Avenue, Tuscaloosa, three five four oh one.
Any questions for Mr. Hanks?
Hey, Brandon, what, you know, we had, um, a resident out in the area up here two, three weeks ago. He's complaining about noise. You and your team came in and addressed this, like, the week following that. Where does that stand? What, what coordination and arrangements have you made?
Uh, there was already a few things in the works. One of the issues would be the loud sounds coming from the generators. Uh, the generators, we're getting rid of. We now have a power line and we have a power dropped. It came in actually today. So we actually have power out there. Uh, as far as the staging goes, we've continually just kept shifting it further and further angled the other direction. And we're probably about another quarter way of turning it to where that's as far as we can go with it. Uh, the speakers all been placed downward angled. Uh, all the time slots were very specific on when the party runs from the start to the finish. There is nothing going into the late, late night, into like the past midnight category. And then as far as the busing and all that goes, uh, you know, it's, when they come in, they have to be bussed in, they have to be bussed out. There is no in-between on that whatsoever.
Go ahead.
I thank you on a follow-up to, um, the questions. Have you all communicated with the resident since?
Is it Mr. Thorn?
Yes.
I have not been in communication. I think one of the previous, uh, the, one of the owners of the property, uh, we actually have one of them here tonight with us.
Okay.
Um, in the past, his partner has spoken with Mr. Thorn.
Okay.
And during that time, there was, um, he had talked to him about making some arrangements. I mean, we'd be more than glad to give any type of layout and pattern of when the, when these things are. We have on average, usually about six a year out there total. The absolute maximum, you know, we could have out there would be ten.
Gotcha.
Out of a three hundred and sixty-five day calendar year. We're not going above that number. We're not planning on anything any greater than that. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
In, in just a minute, I'm, I'm gonna vote yes on these two farm parties. There's a but coming. I'm gonna vote yes because I think in general, that's a win-win situation. That's hundreds and hundreds of young people who are bussed up, taken to a relatively out-of-the-way place. They have their party and they're bussed back. And I, I think if we can maintain that, that's a win for the city, for you, and for the kids. But if, if the noise complaints continue to come out of there, I will not vote to support them anymore. And I don't say that as a threat. I say it because I don't like to surprise people. So I wanna find a way for this to work, but that way is not going to involve homeowners and longtime residences being bombarded with noise. Okay?
Yeah. And like I said, too, before, we go out, and we've actually been following the sound ordinance for the City of Tuscaloosa. But we, you know, obviously, we don't fall in that category, but we have decibel meter checks. And I've gone right up to the property line. I don't step foot onto his property. But I go to the line, test the decibel range, and the decibel range has not gotten anywhere near the, you know, it's, we're running right around sixty-eight to seventy-two. And that's full, that's at, at full maximum base.
Okay.
So, yeah, anything like the low lines, we ta, we tested every single show. And as far as someone being there, either myself or my partner are there, no matter what, every single one of them.
What dates are these? It's only the first two on here?
Yeah, there's actually, these two are for the two September events. We have one on the nineteenth, and then we also have one, I believe, is the, is it twenty? Yeah, it's twenty-second, I believe, on the second one.
So if you get an old gray-headed man and a great big guy, um, meandering around there.
That's right.
Coming to check it out.
Just a comment, you, you made the comment, say you weren't going to be late, I have a feeling to this residence, midnight is very late. Just, just a comment, and your partner or someone made the, uh, said that you might offer to put him in a hotel room for the night.
Yes.
I would appreciate that option, I mean, I, I'm going to vote yes, but I, I, I'm concerned about him as Colonel Busby.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll definitely, we'll reach out and see what we can come up with, and, um, I'll have one of the property owners reach out to him as well, and we'll see when it come up, and I mean, it sounded like a lot of it, which, this is communication-based, and a lot of this has kind of gotten slid to the side, because during COVID, it literally just fell off, and, you know, no one wants to make the news for it again like we did the first time around.
Right.
Um, so, you know, during that timeframe, you know, it just pretty much fell apart, nothing's going on, so it's kind of getting back into the mix, and I understand he would probably like to know no matter what, when there actually is an event, and that would be the first thing foremost, and I'm, I have no problem giving him the full calendar and saying, this is the exact times, you call my cellphone if there's any problems, and there's, if it runs over, if it's twelve oh one, you call and it's, it's done, but we have absolutely no problem doing something along those lines, thank you.
I agree with you, Mr. Fail.
Any other questions?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, any questions on the, of course, the next one is related to Joe Malisham Parkway, the eight after that are primarily on-campus events. Any questions about the next, uh, one or the eight after that, that way we don't have to call Mr. Hanks up again?
These are all alumni, uh, bars, afternoon events.
These all go up to kickoff.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, we'll begin on the application for, uh, Joe Malisham Parkway, and then we'll begin working down in order, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 License is approved, clerk.
This approves the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at Southbound in Tuscaloosa.
Move it up, second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 License is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at D K E Alumni Game Day Bar.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at Five Gam Alumni Game Day Bar.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at S A E Alumni Game Day Bar.
Move it up.
Second, it's been moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at K A Alumni Game Day Bar.
Move it up.
Second, moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at A T O Alumni Game Day Bar.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at Five Si Alumni Game Day Bar.
Move to accept.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at Sig Up Alumni Game Day Bar.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven day special events retail license of Downtown Entertainment LLC at E N Alumni Game Day Bar.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, good luck, clerk.
This will authorize the purchase of equipment, supplies, or services from Stivers Ford.
Move it up.
Second, moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This will authorize execution of a contract to obtain stock loss health insurance coverage from Highmark for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Application's approved, clerk.
This authorizes execution of a letter of engagement with Warren Avery for internal audit services.
Motion.
Second, moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Application is approved, clerk.
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Harpul Steel Buildings Incorporated.
Motion.
Second, moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Pates on Us Plus.
So moved.
Second, moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This will authorize Tuscaloosa Fire Rescue to execute a revocable specialty license agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This will authorize the chief financial officer to draw a draft for the one-year to drive phase two improvements project property acquisitions.
So moved.
Second, moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This will authorize Amendment twelve to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two general fund reserve for future improvements fund budget.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, ordinances and resolutions of a general nature or permanent operation, clerk.
This will annex approximately a hundred and two point oh two acres located at and around the intersection of Industrial Park Drive and Joe Malisham Parkway to the corporate limits.
So moved.
Second, moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Call for unanimous consent.
Second, moved in second, voting Mr. Fail.
Yes.
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 Annexation is granted, clerk.
This will amend section twenty-one twenty-nine of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Yes.